Okay, everyone, we're just about eight minutes past the half hour mark. So we're going to go ahead and get started with our second town hall of this five-part town hall series. I am going to just remind us about the language access announcement before we go into staff introductions. My name is Josephine Aonkoya and I work as the Equity and Inclusion Officer for the City of Hayward. I'll be facilitating today with the support of several staff throughout different city departments. Just as a reminder, so today we do have the mics muted until public comment. You will need to choose a language channel before you can make public comment. So if you have not done so already, we ask that you do this by looking towards the bottom of your screen. If you're on a desktop or laptop, you may see a horizontal bar. It will look different on a cellphone. But if you look for the interpretation globe and then select your language, either English or Spanish, you'll be entered into the English or Spanish channel. And when it's time for public comment, if you're not in one of those two rooms, we will not be able to hear you. And I think we've made this announcement in Spanish already, but I wanted to invite Luisa back to make the announcement for anyone in the main room needing Spanish interpretation before we go on to the next slide.
Buenas tardes nuevamente, les queremos recordar que tenemos los servicios de interpreta interpretación en español disponible para esta reunión. Tienen que ir al pie de su página, pueden ver el globo donde dice interpretación. Opriman ese globo y seleccionen el idioma o el canal de español para poder escuchar. Gracias.
Thank you, Luisa, and thank you all so much for being here. So I want to welcome you on behalf of the City of Hayward. I will give a little bit of background as to what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how we're approaching this meeting in a moment. But first, I wanted to start with some introductions of who's on the call from the City of Hayward. In a few minutes, we'll have time to do a poll of the forty-eight participants currently in the room. And you all will have a chance to show and share who you are. First, let me just briefly share a run of show. Like I mentioned, we have three hours scheduled for this meeting. We are aiming to finish the meeting in about two and a half hours, but we have the time to make sure the public is heard. So we'll start with some opening remarks and then also background on the project overall. Before going into an introduction poll, like I mentioned, that will give us a chance to see who's in the Zoom room. We'll have two proposals. So for those of you who attended a town hall last week where we discussed our first two proposals, the layout is slightly different. We will be splitting up the agenda to talk about one proposal first, followed by the second one. So it will be really important that we manage the time. As we get to public comment, my colleague Leah will give some more information about how you can make public comment. Just as a heads up, one change we have from last week is we will have a limit of two comments per person, per section. So there's still the two-minute timer. We didn't have anyone who needed to speak more than twice last week, but we do want to maintain space for everyone to be heard. And we also want to ensure that there is time to hear diversity of voices. I'll talk more about how we're analyzing feedback, but our goal is to hear as many people, from as many people as possible. So just keep in mind, when it comes to waiting priority and establishing that, one person making a comment a hundred times is different than a hundred people making a comment one time. So this will help us balance out the sort of weight given to each person's comments as we analyze it. So in short, we'll have one section about an hour for talking about property restoration, which is our third proposal in this series, our first for tonight's conversation. And then we'll go into affordable housing for our second proposal to be discussed tonight. We will end with some instructions about the written public comment process, which will happen after these town halls. And we will also talk about next steps. And then finally, we will close out with a poll where you will rank different eligible groups. So for the two proposals that we discuss, our goal is to get some sense of priority from the people in the room. Right now, we have about forty-nine participants. So for those of you who are attending and participating, we want to better understand where you see priorities for the two proposals being discussed after a public comment has concluded. Before we proceed, I see we do have a hand. Esben, I'm going to ask that if you can just wait just a second while we finish introductions and I'll come to you. But for the attendees to know, our goal really is to get through the introductory information first to make sure we maintain as much time as possible for public input. This meeting is all about, I'm sharing a little bit about where the city is and what the process is to get to city council approval, but primarily to hear from the community so that what the city staff put forward represents your priorities. So I can come back to you if you have a question. But I would like to pause and just introduce the team who will be supporting this event. I first just want to start by saying thank you to this team. Staff have been working really hard to make sure this meeting is well-equipped and also to make sure we have the capacity to thoroughly analyze what you're sharing so that when we go before city council, they understand what the priorities are and what has been shared. So I'm going to take the slides down for just a moment so you can see the staff on the call who will be supporting you. And we will start off with Regina Youngblood.
Good evening. Hello, I am Regina Youngblood, one of the two assistant city managers with the City of Hayward. Very happy to be here supporting you all this evening.
How about Tim Nix?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Lowes. I'm an analyst in the IT department here helping out to facilitate the Zoom event tonight.
Kathleen?
Hi, my name is Kathleen Tarentiev. I'm an engineer at the City of Hayward and I look forward to hearing your comments and to help the staff assimilate them. Thank you.
Leah, and then we'll close out with Luisa.
Thank you. My name is Leah Schmidt. I'm a principal planner with the City of Hayward and I'm happy to be here tonight.
Good evening. My name is Luisa Carrera and I am a Spanish-certified interpreter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So this is the team of staff who will be behind the scenes. You'll hear from Leah in a moment, who will help us facilitate public comment. And Regina will be available to support any questions that come up. I will give some background on the project now and then we'll go into hearing from you all. So let me just share a screen again. So we'd like to kick off with some community agreements. Feel free to send us additional agreements in the chat if you have some. The chat is not open for everyone, but you can chat to all the staff on the call. We will see that information. So first, it says zero tolerance space for racism, hate, or disrespect. Everyone's, you know, welcome to share their opinion. That's what we're here for. And we ask that we keep the space respectful. We do reserve the right to remove folks from the room. So if there's any harmful, either written or verbal comments, staff or attendees may be removed. So just keep it respectful and we're really excited to hear from you. The second, we just want to lift up really understanding the emotional labor being acts of the community and especially communities that have been either experienced harm or have been raising this issue for quite some time. We understand that when it comes to a reparative justice work, racial equity work, even government work broadly, there's a certain level of stress. And in particular, when it comes to this kind of work, there's emotional labor with it to have people tell their stories and try to really work with a system that has been challenging for community members in the past. So we just ask that we all kind of have a spirit of compassion in this conversation. We do ask that you step up and step back. We also ask that you participate. Like I mentioned, we do have some parameters for public comment. So there is a lot of opportunity to write feedback in a series of polls where you'll have time to write responses and long answer responses. You'll also have online survey opportunities after the town halls to write your feedback. To manage our three-hour block of time now, we want to hear from as many as the fifty-three people online as possible. So for us, that means that we will cap the comments at two. So we ask that for each section, each proposal, you really think through what it is you want to share. And we can probably share in the chat again a link to a what-to-expect document. You should have also gotten an email with some information about that today. And that said, part of why we're asking you to participate is because we, as city staff, are working to reflect the concerns, the feedback, and the priorities of the community. So if we don't hear it, we can't really report on it. That, just kind of going back to what I was saying, a hundred people saying the same thing or different things helps us better understand what priorities are across a group rather than, you know, just me, myself, Josephine said, this is what I think people want. So it's really important that if we're going to center community in this process, that we understand what community wants. And I'll give a bit of background about that work because it has been happening for quite some time. And we're hoping to solidify and finalize it in this meeting for a series of proposals. If you are calling in, which I think currently I don't see any phone numbers only on the attendee list that may change, we just ask that you identify yourself if you're choosing to make public comment. In the chat, you have the flexibility to make anonymous comments if you like. Again, please have compassion and respect for one another. And finally, and really importantly, this meeting is being recorded. So this meeting will be posted on YouTube. It will be posted on the City of Hayward website as well. So if you do not want your image recorded, please let us know. And I would advise maybe not, well, there won't be any camera, sorry, but for your voice, if you don't want that recorded, perhaps you might prefer to send your comments in writing. That said, all of the feedback is going to be involved in an analysis. So while specific comments will not be shared, themes of what people said and how often they said it will be grouped and shared for public feedback. So it is our desire to be very intentional and protective of individual confidentiality to the extent that we can maintain that in a public meeting and also to report out transparently what we're hearing and why we're proposing it to city council. And then finally, we'll share this email throughout the meeting in the chat. But if you have any concerns, please feel free to email russellcity-rjp@hayward-ca.gov. And we'll put that in the chat. Now, there's a couple dashes in there. It makes it a little bit tricky to remember. Before we dig into Russell City, I did want to make an announcement on behalf of our city clerk's office. So the City of Hayward has decided to move to, or city council has decided to move to district elections. That will be beginning in 2026. That basically means, whereas the City of Hayward has been at large and anyone living in Hayward and voting in Hayward could vote for all the elected officials, now it will shift to something like, you know, you might see in Oakland and other cities where specific geographic regions are assigned for where candidates and elected officials can come from. There is going to be an upcoming public hearing on Tuesday, August the thirteenth at 5:30 PM. It will be held at city hall. If you're interested, we really welcome your feedback. You can submit that in writing. You can also give input on draft maps that are being created. These slides will be made available online. So you'll have that information online on the Russell City Project Portal. And we can drop the email, sorry, the URL website for the Russell City Project Portal in the chat. But you can also go to maphayward.org for this project specifically. Okay, great. So now we're going to pivot to why we're here, talking specifically about the Russell City Reparative Justice Projects and how this town hall series will support us in developing proposals for implementation. So just for the origin story, this may sound repetitive to folks who have seen past recordings of videos or who have been in past meetings, but I just want to level set for everyone here. Back in 2021, the Hayward City Council voted unanimously to approve a resolution to apologize to Black, Indigenous, Latinx, and people of color, specifically for the city's impact on either explicit and/or implicit roles of perpetuating systemic racism. So there was a charge and a desire from elected officials in the city to be accountable for racism, you know, locally, at the local level. In January twenty-twenty-two, during the city's annual strategic roadmap, there was a prioritization session to talk about what the city council wanted staff to focus on for the coming year. And the direction given to staff was to work with survivors or former residents of Russell City as well as their descendants, regardless of race, to determine what appropriate restitution looked like. There was also direction to do so through a community-led process. So you'll hear more about some of the work that's happened to date. I'll be sharing recommendations to date on these two topics from different community members that we've heard from. But just so it's clear, the direction was to really center those who've experienced the harm and understanding what it means to have a community-led reparative justice project and process. And that's what we're doing. So more recently, from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four, that work was happening. There was a steering committee of elected city leaders, or of, well, city leaders, but specifically former residents and descendants. We had fifteen people total. And there was a series of public meetings as well as steering committee meetings to guide a process of research and framing reparative justice work in Hayward. So on March twenty-sixth of this year, that work concluded with a work session with the Hayward City Council. A few things happened at this work session. The first is that Hayward City Council received both twenty-six draft recommendations. And we'll talk about the ones relevant to the proposals for today. And they also received a series of addendums from the Russell City Reparative Justice Project Steering Committee. That was a space to hear from the public. We had about seventy members of the public attend. So probably many of you on this call. And then council directed staff to do three things. One was to narrow down the list of proposed recommendations. So you'll see in a minute, some of the recommendations and/or addendums may have areas of overlap. And also, there was direction to expand community input. So that was for both expanding community input among former residents and descendants and also to expand community input in the City of Hayward. And the third, which we're working on today, is to give scalable options for implementing these recommendations. So by scalable, I mean maybe the scale of reach, whether it be how long the recommendations go for, how much the recommendations are for, or who is eligible. Giving some options so that if there is a conversation around scaling up or scaling down, council has a really clear understanding of what the priorities are. So now I'll talk briefly about the proposals specifically. Like I mentioned, a series of twenty-six draft recommendations were created. And in the last couple of months, staff have worked to consolidate that into the ten topics that we're discussing over this five-part town hall series. That was based on community feedback from public meetings, from steering committee feedback, and then also from comments from the Hayward City Council during the March twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four work session. So implementation proposals, the goal is for those to build on all the feedback to date. We understand at the city that many community members have been voicing concerns for some time and it may feel redundant and we do appreciate your persistence. The feedback given to date has not been ignored or disregarded. And as we go to the final phase of what we want council to say yes or no to, it's really important that we further clarify what's being proposed. And that was both feedback from our steering committee as well as feedback from our elected officials. So that's what we're doing here. That's why we're having the conversations. But that past feedback is not lost. We just want to further refine. And then this end, most of the implementation proposals will primarily be focused on what is said in our town hall series and the public comment process. So we do have the twenty-six recommendations to build off of. We definitely have about, I think, five or six steering committee addendums as well that have, many of them, a lot of detail about what's being proposed. We are primarily trying to gauge sort of global priority with this process. So we do ask that if you feel so inclined to please share your feedback again so we can count it in this space as well as what we've heard so far. And again, feedback can be shared today via verbal public comment, via the polls, or via public comment after the meeting. So why are we here? Today's goal is really to collect community feedback to inform the development of these proposals. Specifically, we'll be looking at what we call a qualitative data analysis. So looking at what people say and how many times they say it and what context is it being said to identify what you're prioritizing. So all the feedback will be analyzed after meeting. And also, just a reminder that feedback does not have to be spoken. It can also be written. So last meeting, we saw there were a good amount of verbal public comments and a lot in writing as well as your wills and to do whatever is comfortable for you. Tonight, we will be discussing two proposals. We'll start with property restoration, which is one of the top priorities identified in the work to date. And then we'll also end with a conversation on affordable housing development. And you'll see when we look through the recommendations that there's a lot of room for clarifying what the public desire is around the affordable housing recommendation. So we'll ask you to give us feedback on these areas bolded at the bottom. First, starting with the what and the why. What is it that you want us to describe as a recommendation? And if you want to, why do you feel is justified? The how could be specific goals or objectives. That could also be details like how long, how frequent. If there are certain mechanisms that you want to see or recommend be included in the implementation proposals, that would be helpful as well. And then finally, we do want to have a conversation about who. So specifically, who is eligible for the proposed benefit? I won't go through this slide in detail because it's basically repeating what I shared. This is a snapshot of the what-to-expect document. It's something you'll see before every town hall meeting if you're signed up to receive alerts for this project. We'll also send it as a follow-up. So basically, these are the questions for you to consider, things I've just said. We will have a link to this in the chat if you want to have some guiding questions for your public comment. But we really just ask you to be as specific as possible. Again, the more we know, the more we understand what you want to see happen. So we ask that you use your time, whether spoken or written, to really tell us, as if you were writing this, what you want to see reflected in a proposal and what you feel is important to highlight. Just a few more logistics before we get into discussion. So we do encourage one person per device. In a moment, we'll have an opening poll. Basically, the device, well, so I'll say this. If you have four people on one computer or five people on one computer, when it comes to giving your feedback, you will be limited. You're only able to do that once. So if you do have multiple people in one room, we do encourage, if at all possible, that you use a secondary device. And if you do have any tech or access issues for future town halls, please feel free to email us at theproject email. We can see about what the city is able to do to support technology accommodations. But please, if you can, join on your own device so we actually have an accurate count of who is saying what, especially when it gets to the end of the meeting, when we're ranking who we feel should be eligible beneficiaries. Just for understanding the flow of the meeting, we will do silent polls before each public comment period. We understand that not everyone wants to speak in this forum. We also find it very valuable to have something in writing from everyone that wants to share. So please bear with us while the polls are going on. Last meeting, it took about twelve minutes for some of the longer polls for everyone to submit responses. So the poll time is a great time for a break once you've written your feedback. Again, what we hear is what we can prioritize and what we can analyze as well. You will be able to raise your hand to speak during public comment. Before we go into the first proposal, I do want to pause to see if there are any comments because we had one earlier. And then, like I mentioned previously, you will be able to use the chat throughout the meeting to ask questions of the staff here. So that is all the background information I have. I want to pause for a moment. I think I saw a hand. Was that a hand, Mr. Pryor? Yes, thank you. See a hand. Let me just, okay, you should be able to unmute. Have Esben?
Okay, yes. Good evening. I wanted to reiterate from the last meeting that my understanding, this is the Russell City Reparative Justice Project. I understand that it's a town hall discussion. It's an open forum. And, you know, all individuals that are logged in have the ability to comment. However, to me, there's been a concerted effort to sabotage and undermine our efforts. So I feel that I'd like to make a motion for the surveys, questionnaires, or polls to only be allowed to be completed by those who are former residents and descendants, those who are direct stakeholders. Because those who are not direct stakeholders, you missed your opportunity to have any type of input on those twenty-six proposals or any proposals at all. So at this point, we're discussing the proposals that were agreed upon and discussed with the committee, the steering committee. So I would like to make a motion for these polls to only be allowed to be completed by those who are actual stakeholders, meaning former residents and descendants. This is something that should be done offline and individuals can do that through their email and they should have to be able to show their connection, their ancestry to a Russell City resident, former resident, a landowner, or property owner. Because at this point, there's only, the only purpose for those who are in opposition is to muddy the waters. And I'm not going to allow that to happen. So I would like to ask all the family members who are listening to second me on that motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Esben. I appreciate you for raising your concern. And I'm hearing a lot of feedback around the critical importance of centering those who've experienced harm. I do just want to clarify, this is not a meeting governed by Robert's Rules of Order. It's also not a meeting where there's voting or voting rights happening in terms of individuals having sort of a right to vote. We're not actually voting on anything. This is a meeting to develop proposals for community feedback. That said, we cannot limit public input. So for example, if people have feedback that they feel no one should be eligible, that's a sentiment that we can analyze. We can understand, you know, how that's come up. And as I've shared at the last meeting and just earlier, staff are being directed by city council to give proposals. So staff will be giving proposals either way. And I would just really respectfully ask that we try to prioritize the time that we do have on the discussion at hand. I'm going to go to one more question in just a second, but just want to reiterate. We are trying to be mindful about the time and not have it be the full three hours if we don't need it. We also have about two hours for you to be heard. So I would encourage, rather than encouraging how others to make comment, I would encourage each of you to focus on your public comments. So every comment is weighted equally. And we can't selectively say what we heard or what we didn't hear. That said, for everyone here, you know, if you're not sharing a comment, we don't know your priority. So even if something's been said, whether it's for or against an idea, but they are inspired by something you heard, there's opportunity to give your unique opinion. So I want to go briefly to Rafik. I'm going to ask Rafik if you can keep it to about thirty seconds to a minute. I do want to keep us on time and we're slightly behind. So let me give you mic access. And then after that, we are going to go into our first poll to see who is in the room for the fifty-six folks present. Okay, Rafik, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, everyone. I'll keep it brief. I know you said...
Sorry, Rafik. Give us just one second. I think I might have, give me one second, Rafik. Sorry, that was my mistake. Okay, you should be able to talk now.
Okay, thank you. I thought I was unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll keep it brief. I know you stated that this meeting is not governed by Robert's Rules of Order. However, I did hear a motion placed on the floor. And the reason that I raised my hand, because I am intending to second that motion. I thought Mr. Pryor stated his case absolutely spot-on and I'm in full agreement with everything that he said. And thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Rafik. So again, just to reiterate, the reason why we wouldn't take a formal vote is this is not, this is not in a set organization. Like, for example, council would need to follow Robert's Rules of Order when they actually are making a decision. So no decisions are being made today. I just want to, again, reiterate what we're trying to spend the time on and encourage you all that if you have feedback, to really think through that document that we shared in the chat about what do you want to see, not do you, not so much what you want the next person to say. So you'll see here, we have about almost two hours of time specifically to hear from what is the public input on the proposal. So we're going to be collecting input regardless of what it is. We can't forecast what you'll say, but we want to hear from you. And our goal is to get to a document that looks something like this. So council has directed staff to create these. Council has directed staff to narrow down a very robust list of ideas to something more focused so they can really decide on the top priorities. So I'm going to respectfully ask that we shift so we can use the time to hear from you all. But again, just want to encourage that we are staff. We only have these meetings, I mean, it's a pretty long meeting, right? We have about three hours each, but when the five meetings are done, the five meetings are done. If we don't hear from you, we don't hear from you. So I really want to make sure we're using the time to hear from as many people as possible. And again, this will be created based on what people say. So for, you know, themes around opposition, that's fine. That's something that will likely be reflected in a bigger report on what staff heard from the public input, not necessarily a proposal on how to do specific items. So I think I want to rest assured that everyone here will be heard. We're taking all the feedback to heart. We are going to analyze everything we hear so we can objectively report back to council with the direction that we were given. And with that, I'm going to shift us to our introduction poll so we can really focus in on who's in the room before we get into the first conversation around property restoration. But just a preview again, because I think folks are thinking about it. Some of the questions that'll come up, and I'll come right back to this, is what do you want to propose? If there's an action, a service, a type, when it comes to these two topics, what do you want to see? How do you think it should happen in specific detail so that when we propose something, it reflects your desires as a community? Why do you think it's justified? And I see some folks maybe in the chat sharing some of that. So please feel free to frame that in terms of why you think whatever action being proposed is justified and then who's eligible to benefit. We don't want to have you all spend so much of your time and not get to clarity on that. So please just be thinking about that as we go into the next set of polls. And thank you so much for your input. So our first poll will be to introduce you all. You have to hear from the staff team. Basically, we'll ask you three questions. I'm going to ask my colleague Tim to launch a poll in a moment, so please answer all three. This will be used to enter you into a raffle. So if we don't have your name or don't know who you are, we can't interview you. We can't interview you. So if you entered on a device that is not labeled, um, just send us a chat with your name. So. First, it'll be which group best represents you. If you represent more than one groups, feel free to mark it. How many people are viewing the event with you? So if you're um sharing the device, let us know how many people. So we can accurately reflect back how many folks attended. And then because we are offering this meeting in both English and Spanish, we would like to know how many folks are listening in English. And how many folks are listening in Spanish. So with that, I'm gonna ask that the fifty-five attendees on the call, please um complete the poll. Thank you all for getting the answers in. We have about half a group, so we'll give it about a minute more to answer who's in the room. We're waiting for just about five more people. Um, I see there are some hands raised. I'm gonna ask that we hold comments until public comment, so we can stay on time. So for uh Motorola. Moto G, five G, if you could just hold your hand or raise it again for public comment, we're, I'm gonna hold off on. Any further comment until we get to discussing the proposals. Thank you. Okay, we have most of the room. I'm gonna give about uh fifteen more seconds for the last. Looks like we have about seven folks who have not responded before we move on. Okay, great. That was a little over two minutes, and I know sometimes the non-response is the response. So we can end that poll. We had about forty-five of the fifty participants um complete the poll. Um, and if you do need more time or support technically, please let us know in the chat. We're happy to take your answers. And record them for you. So if anyone's having challenges with um the technology, just let us know. You can um enter it in the chat. Or um raise your hand if it is a technical assistance, quick support question. So if you all should be able to see your um responses on the screen, you'll see a a hundred percent of attendees are listening in English. For question number two, looks like we have about thirty-three percent of attendees identify as former residents. Fifty-three percent as uh descendants of former residents of Russell City. Thirty percent as Hayward residents, one as either a Cal State East Bay or Chabot student. And six as other. Um, I should note that the staff are omitted from um taking that survey, but you met the staff on the call earlier. And then last, for how many people joining with you, it looks like um most people, seventy-three percent are alone on their device. With five um joining with one other person and about four more joining with two or. Four other people. So thank you so much of of you who are joining in a group again um for things like the raffle. And also for the poll, I do uh, oh, sorry, let me share results. Um, team, are you able to see the results now?
Yes.
Sorry, thought the results were showing. So let me just share that for a second, so y'all can scroll through. I was talking through it, thinking you have the visual. But I'm in front of you on your device, you should be able to see the responses. Um, and then um, just as a reminder, it looks like we have about uh maybe ten. Fourteen, maybe about fifteen people um. Who are um joining with others. So if you want to be entered in the. Raffle or want to give individual level polls, we do encourage you to join a second device. All right? So we're gonna stop sharing the poll now and just get into some background information about what we know so far as it relates to property restoration. And what is being proposed with that. Let me just verify, um, staff team, are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you so much for confirming. So this is labeled proposal number three. It's the first one we'll be discussing today, but as I mentioned, the first two proposals were discussed last week. And we'll, we'll continue to discuss two proposals each town hall. So we have three more following today. Um, and we will jump right into property restoration. So first, I wanna share some of the feedback that came from a set of the twenty-six recommendations from um the steering committee. With support from Sirius Research Group, which was a consultant um hired by the city of Hayward. And then I'll share um additional notes from the addendums from steering committee members. Um, so I'll pause. I know it's a lot of text on this slide. I'll give you about a minute to read over, and then I'll talk through some of the themes. Um, that are uh reflected in the initial uh wave of draft recommendations. Okay, so as you can see, there are a series of different recommendations. So what I did was group everything tied to the realm of um. Um, different actions or recommendations as it relates to property restoration. So I will skim through these because there is also um other feedback that I would like to share for background. Um, so the first uh, the second line of that table shares uh a two-part um recommendation. So it pairs both property restoration. And fair compensation. So we did discuss fair compensation last week. For the purposes of tonight, we're focused on the the property restoration component. Um, so that speaks to really specifically trying to give back property for um folks who've had land um taken away. Either residential or business land. Um, there's another one around infrastructure development. So as there are, um, there were several recommendations as I mentioned. So for the ones related to. Uh repairing the harm for a lack of infrastructure, there were recommendations that any new land being returned needs to be equipped. Uh with a series of amenities to meet the social, cultural um and economic and environmental needs. Um, there are other uh recommendations as it relates to restitution um for those same issues that I mentioned. Um, there are some recommendations to base the um property restoration and the human rights framework. Um, specifically as it relates to restoring property and all the recommendations that were from the steering committee leverage this framework. Um, and I would argue that many of the addendums from the steering committee um also fit into different pillars of this framework. Um, and then finally, there was uh recommendations around policy changes. So specifically. Um, that the city um or other entities working on the city's behalf champion legal reform to prevent um. Uh injustices from happening again. So those are several different topics around property restoration. I think the most relevant one being the actual concept. Of restoring property and then all these being um uh infrastructure investments or frameworks for policy and for repairing harm. So now I wanna show you what came from the steering committee. So this may look um similar. It is. Um, touching on the same themes, but in different words as well. So I will give you a second to read this slide, and then we have a second slide. Um, and I'll talk you through it as you do. Um, so, starting from the top, really centering the crucial issue of land restoration was a recommendation from the committee. Um, and also ensuring that the voices of property owners and business owners were elevated. Um, so thinking about what are the impacts and the harmful impacts of the land grab. The long-term impacts on wealth and on well-being, not just for Russell City residents, but for their descendants. Um, another one in more plain terms is return the land to homeowners and business owners. Um, another recommendation was that if original land cannot be returned. That um alternate land should be provided to homeowners and business owners. And there were several examples shared of city-owned land such as uh the Sky West Golf Course, parks, police stations, libraries, fire stations, public buildings. So this um recommendation really spoke to assessing the city's um available land. Um, and then returning that. Um, another recommendation is to provide a list of city-owned property to the Russell City Steering, a a repair of justice steering committee. Um, I do have some updates from another project that will um. Give clarity on city-owned land for any member of the public. There's a really great tool that um both Leah and Tim worked on that is available. Um, another recommendation is to provide government-owned land to property owners and their descendants to recreate generational wealth. So again, it sounds similar, but in different words from different people, these recommendations came forward. Um, another recommendation is to create tax breaks and or tax break incentives for property owners. And then there's another. Okay, I think there's requests to re-present the previous slides. I will um make these available. Um, online in the coming days. This one is a bit long, so um I'll, I'll leave it for just a second, just to clarify the difference. There was a list of twenty-six draft recommendations um that was developed with support from a consultant on behalf of the city and um the steering committee. And the ones I'm going through now, which start on the next slide, are specific recommendations that came via addendum. So we had. A group that also gave um more specific um recommendations for what they would like to see. And I think I went through everything on this slide, so I wanna end with this. Last one. Um, and then just as a quick reminder, we do have recordings for um our. Past meetings. So maybe, um Kathleen, if you don't mind sharing in the chat, the link to our March twenty-six. City Hall um city council meeting. That is a meeting where we discuss all the recommendations and the addendums, and it's also a meeting where council responded to that in the work session. Um, we can also share the link to our project portal where you can find all the past um information on meetings. Um, so the last couple of things that came through from the steering committee, um again, just to frame what we know so far. Before you go into what you wanna see, so you can repeat things, you can add to it, you can change it. Um, there was again, um a call for thinking about legislation specifically. So this recommendation called for um supporting and approving legislation that deals with the return of land. And um referenced um the Bruce's Beach Bill, um SB seven ninety-six as an example. Um, and the last two recommendations, um again, very similar, but to reclaim the land. Um, to its displaced property owners, business owners, community organizations, or their descendants. And there are some ideas around eligibility, which we'll talk about in a second. Um, and then finally, um the concept of re-establishing Russell City as a town, either holistically or in part. Um, so that former residents who may want to return to that land or descendants. Could um leverage the space, and the recommendation was to give equal amounts of land for what was taken. So as you can see, um several of the themes overlap, which is part of the reason why we want to consolidate and refine what's being put forward. But generally, generally, we heard return the land um to a variety of different people. We've heard um consider policy advocacy, um and then also tax breaks as a part of that. So that's feedback to date. As we go into public comment, again, we are really focused on. Getting your feedback for what you want to see reflected in this document. We're um not going to be able to make several different proposals for. This project. So our goal is to get as much feedback as possible, so we can have different tiers of priority. With that feedback in mind. So now you know all that we know in terms of what people have shared um for their interests so far. And we'll open it up shortly, um as Leah coordinates public comment for you to begin to share your feedback. Um, that will follow some silent polling time. Um, just a few quick notes to consider, um, this is not to direct the public um in any way, but there is a um. Surplus lands act in California that basically provides guidelines and restrictions for disposing of surplus land. Um, and it also aims to promote the development of affordable housing as um public land is disposed. Uh, there's a pending bill in review called SB or Senate Bill ten fifty. That is specifically focused on um changing rights around um reversing the harmful effects of racially motivated eminent domain. Um, so that has not passed, but it is under review um at the state level and could. Um, if passed, change the the landscape for the city of Hayward. Um, and in a moment, I'll talk briefly about a mapping tool, just to give you some background to um how. The city staff have responded to feedback from the community to understand, you know, where was the land? Where is it now? You know, how is the city benefiting and all that? Um, this is a tool that has not been launched. We do wanna preview a prototype with you now. To give you a sense of some of the public information that we are compiling for uh this project, and it's very relevant to property restoration. Um, I will just flag that if um with this uh tool, and I'll show it to you in just a moment, um we do ask that if you want to opt out. Um, we have a survey where you can specifically say, I do not want to be named on this. I do not want my family members named on this. So let me just um bring up a document for you all, um and then we'll get into the polls and discussion. So one of the um actions that came out of, let me just make sure for y'all can see this. Um, sorry, give me one second. So the goal of this map is to really better understand, you know, what happened to Russell City. Um, I think it's also something that we've heard repeatedly as a recommended resource um to have developed before. Um, city council makes this determination. So give me one second. Um, are you able to see the map now? I think I'm, okay. I think I'm sharing the map now. Can you all see a purple line?
Yes, we can see the map.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna be very brief with this. It's more to give you a sense of what's included and also to make sure that people um. Former residents and descend- descendants can be informed and can consent to being a part of this tool. So this, very briefly, this is a tool called GIS or geographic information, a systems mapping. It's used very commonly. And just briefly, what you'll see on the right here is um, so first. These purple lines represent what we know of Russell City. Um, it's not meant to be comprehensive of every single lot because. We are um still trying to find missing records, but there are over a thousand properties identified. So the purple lines, if you look at the right over here, you'll see a purple outline and this. This a checkbox that says Russell City lots. When you click it um on and off, what it'll do is turn on layers of. Where Russell City uh parcels and lots were. Further down, there is an assessor's map from nineteen forty, so you can click that. Let's zoom out for you all. Like this little bit more of a sort of context. This is um. Um, not necessarily comprehensive, but what we know so far. So you can see some of these areas, like for this, this is one of the um Santa uh two, two T. Um, I think either dairy or hog farm, that one is not on this map from the assessor's office, but it is a parcel that we're trying to. Uh, map uh from public records. You can also click, this has basically aerial footage, so it's kind of from the air photo footage of nineteen fifty-four. I guess it's a sense of what Russell City looked like. Um, and then you can click, for example, current Hayward parcels. It does get busy. Um, so. Um, but I recommend oftentimes, I think, a good pairing to see what was there and what's there today. As if you turn off everything, you'll see. Um, the city of Hayward aerial footage from today. And if you zoom in, you can see streets like Winston, West Winston, Lincoln, Forbes, Davis, right? You can click um any layer you like at a time to play around with, but this right here will show, for example, Russell City lots over a current day. Um, aerial footage. Why we wanted to preview this, because we know we typically have a lot of uh descendants and former residents who could be impacted by this. I do wanna flag that all the documents. Um, here either came from crowdsourcing um or from a research of public records at the county level. So what you'll see is you can actually click a parcel, and then when you do that, on the right, you would see information in this area here. So we have removed um all names for the purposes of this demonstration and to also make sure the public can opt into this tool. Um, but what you would find is that for the documents that we have, it will have a name. So that may not be who lived there. That could be a landlord. Who had um a deed on file during a time that many different tenants were there. So this is very heavy towards, I would say, homeowners for sure. But generally, what you see is parcel information, the document types. That basically tells you what we have on file. So it might say imminent domain document. This one has quit claim. It might say grants. It might say tax documents. Um, that's how we're um able to flag what a document justifies a name being tied to a parcel. Um, so again, just wanted to share this very briefly because it's one of the things that you all have been asking for. It also um. Gets the sense of what is currently in this industrial space. Um, we will have um more information on this throughout future town halls and really wanna save the time of talking specifically to property restoration. I do wanna preview one more um document as well. Um, so you all should see a black box. This is a. Map of the public land um owned by the city of Hayward and also has other entities. And we'll share this parcel explorer map in the chat. This one is actually publicly available already. Um, the uh GIS tool for Russell City is not live. We wanna make sure people um want to be included before it goes live. And like I mentioned, for this tool, we do have a survey. So if you know, like, I do not want any information on my family, we'll share that in the chat. Um, I will say that we're not distributing any documents. We're just noting what documents we have. To prove that someone at one point in time lived in these parcels as they were when they were um city. So I would encourage, hopefully you can get feedback. So we welcome feedback um today or another time. So. Basically, with this parcel explorer map, we'll leave it in the chat, so you can play around with it. You can come over here and collect or collect, select city of Hayward owned uh parcels. And then it shows you a map of the city, and these green um spots are various um publicly owned. Land in um the city of Hayward. There also are several other groups like the Hayward Unified School District and other entities. So I did wanna share that because it has been a request. So I did want to share that because it has been a request, um and it is something that is available now. So now I'm going to go back so we can get into hearing from you. I know you've been hearing a lot from us, but like I mentioned, uh property restoration was one of the top. Recommendations, um and also had a lot of feedback, so that is why we are giving it a little bit more time. Okay. So now, oh, sorry, I'm sharing the wrong screen. Let me just go right back to. Okay, we're a little behind time, so let me get us going. Alrighty. Okay. Here we go. So just so we can get to public comment, um again, we'll try to end early, but if we need to take the time, we have it. Well, actually, uh two sets of questions. We're first going to ask a short answer response, um so it's a two-part. In two words or less, who do you think uh should be eligible? And then if you have a second group, who are they? So this is specifically as it relates to property restoration. We're going to launch that poll now and ask for your initial feedback about who should be eligible. We have about twelve out of forty-eight responses, so we'll give you some more time. Um, this feedback, I should note, will be used to create a ranking poll. That we will do at the end of the meeting where we rank for both proposals, who should be eligible. So if you have ideas, please feel free to note them for the two-part question. And we'll give you maybe about, maybe two more minutes or a minute and a half more. We have about sixty-eight percent of participants. We want to give you a little bit more time. If you have any issues with technology and would prefer to use the chat. Please feel free to send um your responses to these two questions in the chat. So first. Who should be eligible for property restoration? And second, if you do think a second group should be eligible, who is that secondary group? So let's take about forty-five more seconds and we'll move on to the next polling question. Okay, we are a little behind time, so I'm going to give it about ten more seconds. We have forty-one of the forty-eight people responding. While that's happening, I know several folks are really interested in the, oh, turn my camera on, sorry. Several folks have raised some questions about access to the Russell City map. Um, we really want to make sure that um you all have access to that to inform your um. Feedback, especially as it relates to property restoration. We're going to try to make that available in the coming weeks, so that by the time a public comment is open for property restoration. The tool will be available as well. Um, I will say for attendings, we do need your support, so if you know, for example, you have concerns. Or you know you do not want your information included, please um let us know with the opt-out form. Um, that will be really helpful, and there is a way to get your information removed from this map. Um, and I know that one of the concerns that uh some community members raised in earlier versions of this was. Um, how we verify who has access to what information. So after we get into public comment, you're welcome to chime in on that, but we do really want to focus primarily today on. What do you want proposed when it comes to city council considering property restoration? And who do you want to be eligible for what's being proposed? Okay, so we can close the chat now. We got about eighty-five percent participation. Thank you all so much for that. Um, we're not going to share this poll. We are going to be sorting the answers in real time and using what you said to make a poll, so. We will come back to this topic um at the end of the meeting, so be thinking about who are the top priority groups for you. Okay, so now we're going to go into one more poll. This will be a little bit longer. On average, people preferred about ten minutes to complete this. Um, so this is actually a chance to expand on um the first question. You'll see two questions. The first is an opportunity to talk a lot more about eligibility, so I know some of the comments in the chat were that. With two com- two words alone is hard to speak to that, so you'll see in the next poll that. One of the first questions will deal with eligibility, so feel free to share more about who you think should be eligible. We saw notes earlier from um initial recommendations saying that if someone maybe has passed on. Um, a benefit should be able to pass to the next generation. So if you have thoughts about. A schema for how um eligibility is determined or. Granted to multiple groups, feel free to share more detail. There'll be two long answer responses. You'll also be able to share about pro- uh descriptions, actions, um. And in more details, and of course, if your feedback is that, if you know, none of it should happen, you can put that in your writing as well. So these are just some questions for consideration. Um, you will have them in the what-to-expect document that was emailed out to you. So now we would like to launch a second poll. Um, again, this is a bit longer, so this will be your chance to really take a moment. Think about it, whatever you want in writing. Um, what would you want to see as a description for property restoration, and what would you want to see as eligibility criteria? Um, so we'll probably give you, we'll check in in about maybe seven minutes. I think most folks needed a bit of time to think about this. So feel free to take a quick break when you're finished, and um we'll get started in a few minutes. Again, this is a longer prompt and will likely take some more time involved, so we'll take about ten minutes. Um, so far, we only have seven respondents. Um, so feel free to continue to write your feedback. We will wait until we have um a significant response before moving on to public comment. So far, we have about fifty-six percent of uh participants um completing this poll, so we have um. We're now fifty-eight, twenty-seven of our forty-six attendees. Um, it's trickling up, so we'll give it a few more minutes. Let's say maybe. Um, let's say about five more minutes. I know some folks have um different comfort with technology, and we want to make sure everyone is heard, so. If you want to make public comment, please be thinking about your questions. I'll just share them on the screen um for reference. And we'll go back um. And give some intro to public comment before we get started. But let's give it about five minutes, so just after six forty-five, we can wrap up. This poll, and if you're having any other issues, please feel free to coordinate with us in the chat. So if you're one of the eight people have, who have not submitted your answer. Please take about one more minute before we close the poll to get in with you, uh what you can. Um, so we have about eighty-two percent response, um thirty-eight of the forty-six people. On currently, and we'll give you about one more minute. We want to make sure we are hearing from you if you want to be heard on this question. So please try to submit a response shortly. Thank you. So before we end the poll, I just want to make you all aware, um our team will be putting. The questions to the poll in the chat. So if you're one of the seven people who have not pressed submit on your poll yet. Um, fret not, you can um send that information to the staff in the chat, so we'll just ask that you. Send anything you want to put in writing um via the chat, so we can. Support you in getting that information reflected in our poll results that we analyze after the meeting. Um, so we are going to go ahead and close the poll now, and hopefully everyone who wanted to respond has responded. Okay. So thank you all for taking. The time to do that. We are going to um keep going because we're a little behind schedule. Again, we planned to finish about thirty minutes early. We may finish on time. Depending on public comment. Um, so we've completed the background information about property restoration. I'm going to bring up my colleague Leah Schmidt. Who will be coordinating public comment and who's going to give you some information about uh making public comment and instructions on how to do so. Thank you, Leah.
Thank you, Josephine. So um this is the public comment portion. Um, if you'd like to give a public comment on Zoom, there should be a raise hand button either at the bottom of your screen or on the side, depending on your device. Um, if you dialed in on a phone, um please press star nine to raise your hand. Your hand has to be raised in order for us to unmute you, um and then to speak, you'll push star six. Um, we're going to go in the order of raised hands, and then just a quick reminder that we're going to limit public comments on each topic. To two per person. Um, you don't have to make two comments. You can put your comments into the chat if you'd rather not speak publicly. Um, and then um we will move on to a second topic, and there. and there will be another public comment portion. So this one is around the topic of property restoration, which is the topic that we were just discussing and polling about. And so we will move on to the first speaker, Tina McLean. If you want to unmute yourself, you should be able to speak.
Hi, my name is Tina McLean. I'm a descendant of Thomas Thurlow Vickers and Dolly Vickers. My mom is Jeldean Vickers. And I wasn't able to get on the last poll, but I guess we can enter it into the box. But my, um, my thoughts are that the descendants definitely should be able to have any reparative justice benefits that the actual residents had. Because if our parents and our grandparents would have been able to continue living there, there would have been some possibilities of purchasing home and land and passing it on to the next generation. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Joe Smith. Joe, if you want to unmute yourself, you should be able to speak.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I was trying to take the poll on my, using a tablet and was, and I was unable to take any of the polls. So I just now switched to the computer. And I'm not sure if I need to have a computer and tablets don't work. I'm not sure. Can you comment on that?
If you want to provide written responses, maybe just put it into the chat to make sure it's captured and you can send it directly to Kathleen.
Okay, so I could tell her that tablets don't work then?
Yes, we got your messages. We understand.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is iPhone eight-one-one-four-one-zero-nine-two-two-three-one. If you unmute yourself, you should be able to speak.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay, what I was wondering, is really anything going to really come across for this action project? Or is it just going to be another thing that's just water under the bridge?
And so we aren't really responding to questions right now. However, at the end of the public comment period, Regina and Josephine may come on and respond to some questions. Right now, we're just taking public comments to keep the flow going. Do you have specific public comments that you'd like to make about this topic?
Well, I do think that the descendants and also the people that have lived there should be compensated if there is anything that comes across from this. Other than that, I just don't know where this is really going to go.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Rafiq Mohammed for the, I can't, for the prior family. You should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Yes, my name is Rafiq Mohammed and I am representing the prior family. Our family moved to Russell City in nineteen forty-five. And upon arriving in the Hayward area, we were steered into Russell City because we couldn't live anywhere else in the area. Upon arriving, our grandfather went to work trying to get the county of Alameda and the city of Hayward to provide water services and other infrastructure necessities to the area. So you know, we're eighty years in and here I am standing in this spot, still trying to get justice for my family today. I am in support of this, um, this portion of the restitution. I think it should be an ongoing for the descendants of former residents and former homeowners. We were born into this injustice that continues to have a negative impact on our ability to obtain generational wealth. I believe it should be, eligibility should be a tiered system. First priority should go to resident homeowners and resident business owners. Second, to descendants of former resident homeowners and resident business owners. Third, to former residents and their descendants. And fourth, to non-resident property owners. And I, once again, I am support of the action being proposed.
Hey, thank you. And we're moving on to Mary Ann Johnson. If you unmute yourself, you should be able to speak.
Hello, and thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to speak about land restoration. It's very important that for those who lived in Russell City and their descendants, to be restored, repaired, and repaid for the injustice of what happened when we were forced out of Russell City, which as one of my previous speakers mentioned, who were born into it. We suffered through it and we're still here and we're still standing. Many of the original owners of said properties are not here to speak for themselves. So I, as a member of two families that owned their own land, free and clear, am here to approve that any and every way that this can be restored, repaired, and repaid, that the city of Hayward and any other cohorts, county and state, federal, whoever, give their one hundred percent, as they gave their one hundred percent to push us out. I expect the same to restore, repair, and repay the debt that is owed for the injustice that we endured. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And we're moving on to Michael Johnson. If you unmute yourself, you should be able to speak.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so, um, thank you. So I'm speaking for the Ross family. My mom, Mary Ann Johnson, not the Mary Ann that just spoke. But this is another Mary Ann Johnson. I'm her son. So her family and my family lived there. And my mother met my father there, Melvin Johnson, who was from the Stone family. And so echoing what other folks have said, that, um, you know, restoration should go to those folks who live there and then also their descendants and then also business owners. And so I think, and you know, and to verify those, if you can't verify records, you can look at school records in addition to property lot, property lot owners. Because there's different ways that you can, you know, verify that folks were, you know, a part of Russell City. But looking at, you know, my mom went to school there and some of my uncles and aunts went to school there. And so that's all I wanted to say and thank you.
Thank you so much. And moving on to Tony Nguyen Charles and Isabel Sanders. You should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, my name is Tony and I'm speaking on behalf of my grandparents who bought a quarter of an acre in anticipation of moving into Russell City to be near our family. But before that could happen, they did buy the land, but it was taken from us and they were only given two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for a quarter of an acre of land, which I know now is worth a lot more. So I am saying, yes, we should be repaired and it should not be a one-time payment. It should be monthly. For the companies that are on my grandparents' lands now, they need to pay me monthly for being on my grandparents' stolen land. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, right now, we don't have anyone in the queue to speak. Um, anyone else want to, okay, a couple of people have joined. Sheila, if you want to unmute yourself, you should be able to speak.
Hello, my name is Sheila and my grandparents moved out there in the forties. My parents lived there in the forties also. They got married and they lived there. And I do believe, it's really sad to hear that all is injustice. I've always went to the reunions, Russell City reunion and I'm really glad that they're starting to do something about all this injustice that had happened. I think that all the descendants, everybody should be paid back what was taken from them. And I just wish the best for all of us. It was very injustice what they did to us back in them days. And like I said, my parents went there, my grandparents, my parents, all my uncles and aunts, they all lived there. My aunt, I think, owned a store out there. She had a little store. And I just hope that we're able to bring justice to all these people.
Thank you, Sheila. And then we did have Frank Goulart had his hand up and then it went down. I just want to make sure, Frank, if you want to put your hand up, I can unmute you, but we're going to move on to some other votes. Okay, I'm going to allow Frank to talk and then we'll move on to a few others. Frank, if you want to unmute yourself, we should be able to hear you.
All right, maybe, okay, thank you. My name is Frank Goulart. I'm a Senator of Hayward. It seems to me it's, there are many native, lonely people should be called about this stuff here, their land. And also, I'm a favorite of blues. The blues really hop for Russell City. I met Mama Thornton by my dad and saw about power blues, blue signatures. Why is there no being, can it's considered to, given to the blues artists? And also the loners in, we're on the land. And I'm sorry, I had a stroke four years ago. I'm, uh, I like to be fair equally, but I wouldn't be. I did write a song of the Russell City Blues and it's a story that talked about my dad and when I met Mama Thornton, when I met her, it's when I was seven years old. It was, it was, it was bluesing, it was bluesing for me. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Frank. Moving on to Arthur Long Jr. Do you want to unmute yourself? We should be able to hear you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, my name is Arthur Long. I represent the Long family. I'm a former resident. Actually, I had over fifty relatives there. My grandmother lived there. My great-grandmother lived there. We were, we owned a quarter acre and which was ripped away from us. I'm in agreement with previous callers that we should not only be restored our land, we should be given restitution by the people who have taken over our land, who have made money and paid taxes on our land, retroactive all the way back to sixty-four when they kicked us out of there. I really appreciate this forum. I appreciate the map that you put up for us. Can't wait to look at that. But we should be restored. We should be restored. We know that the money that was taken from the land sale there was used for very, very personal, private property. And, well, we'll just say we know that that money was used for, for a project that a lot of us are aware of. And we just thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much. Moving on to, as been prior, Anthony, family representative. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Oh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I'm in agreement with what some of the previous folks have said about the property restoration to the former residents and former landowners and former business owners and descendants. And I just want to also emphasize that, you know, we have a lot of senior and elder former residents who are still alive, who are actually property owners and who are elders that were former residents. And we should try to strive to make it some type of priority to address their needs to have restoration or to have reparations in terms of their age, because, you know, we're lucky to have those elders alive still and we should make it some type of priority to address them. And then also, in terms of eligibility, we could do that through like public records, birth certificates, whatnot. And also, I wanted to address the taxes that have been collected by the county for the property. We should also be able to receive some percentage of that as well because not only are there actually business owners on some of the land, the county has been collecting taxes on that. So they've actually been making profit and generating revenue on the backs of our ancestors. And I would like for that to be addressed or for that to be a part of the restoration or restitution process as well. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And moving on to Reverend Tony Pierce. You should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Can you hear me okay now?
We can hear you.
Thank you. This is Reverend Tony Pierce from National Black Wall Street Project. And I want you to know that you can Google me, Reverend Tony Pierce reparations. Pages come up. You'll know who I am. I'm a major community leader. And I want to commend you folks on all the good work you're doing and on answering your questions. Let's follow this thing through. Let's make it happen. Actions, we should follow the guidelines of what the state of California did with the African-American Reparations Committee. Compensation from, uh, from sixteen nineteen to today. As far back as you can. from sixteen nineteen to today, as far back as you can go, for all the ills that have been done. How, uh, all compensation in all areas, if people have done, had residences there, if they've done business there, if they visited there, if they uh had been educated there. And I want to remind you why the Tenth Commandment. Thou shall not covet. Thou shall, which means thou shall not steal is another commandment. Thou shall under covet. It also means thou shall not possess something that is somebody else's. And all people are eligible that are, again, past and present and that have ever lived there, visited there, done business there or educated in the entire city of Hayward. God bless you all and thank you for your time. We, the world is watching you. We want you to know that. I yield my time.
Thank you, Reverend. Um, moving on, um, we're gonna go to Sheila next and we have a few more minutes uh for this item for public comments. If anyone has uh wants to take some time, otherwise, uh, we'll move on to the next part. So if you'd like to speak, um, please do put your hand up. Um, we'll have about uh three to five more minutes. Sheila, you should be able to unmute yourself. Sheila, would you like to talk or does your hand raised from previously?
Oh, I'm sorry, I already commented.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I must hit the button.
Again, we have a couple more minutes in this section if people do want to speak. Otherwise, we'll move on to the second topic for tonight.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to go on to the next section. If I can just chime in very briefly about a few things that came up before we go to affordable housing. And thank you so much, Leah, for coordinating that. You all will see Leah in just a moment. Um, I think there was just a conversation um where one of the comments were about um jazz and artists. So there is a um proposal that will deal with heritage preservation that'll be on September twenty-fifth. So that will be discussed later. And um in our closing, Regina and I can share a bit more about next steps. Um, but there was an earlier question about where is this all going, what's going to come of that? And short, nothing has been approved. Our goal as city staff is to put the best proposals forward for consideration by city council. Um, after we follow the direction to get more input, to refine the proposals and actually prioritize what uh the community wants, we'll be bringing it to council for two meetings in November and December. And our goal is to get to some decision before the end of the calendar year. And so thanks so much for participating in public comment on property restoration. You can continue to use the chat to share any extra sentiments. We will be shifting now to talking about affordable housing. Um, so I may have mentioned this towards the start of our meeting. There was not as much um feedback on affordable housing. So I'm going to share what came in from the list of the twenty-six recommendations that I mentioned earlier. Um, so the first is that there should be a Russell City Comprehensive Housing Initiative. Um, so specifically thinking about emphasizing affordable housing for descendants that were affected by um Russell City's redevelopment project, uh, project. Um, and also to um emphasize affordable housing for descendants who may be experiencing homelessness. Um, you will notice as written, this um description does not include former residents. So that's something that people have different thoughts about, they could chime in on. Um, and then there also was another recommendation around housing policies and land trusts. Um, so the idea being that um with community land trust, that could be a resource um to facilitate affordable housing in a community-owned kind of way. So those are the main two recommendations that have come through from our end as it pertains to affordable housing. Um, from my um review, I did not see any um addendums from our steering committee. So with the last proposal, you saw there were several addendums around property restoration, none for affordable housing. So just to kind of give some context before we open up this conversation. Um, the first one, I think, is arguably the most um important. Um, oh, sorry, give me one second. I think we had one public comment that we may have missed. Um, let me go back so we can pause for a second. I think we had Donna Whitmore, um, who had a public comment for um property restoration that did not get to speak. So let me just go back really quickly. Donna, we'll give you your two minutes of time to make a public comment and then we'll go back to affordable housing and I'll continue the background information there.
Um, okay, yeah, apologies that we did not see that hand. Um, oh, it's up now. Okay. Um, Donna, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Hello?
We can hear you. We can hear you.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that no one likes to be forced to move. But it's happened at least just in Hayward and Elamita County for the last seven decades. It's happened to many groups of people, not just to Russell City. Russell City, though, was actually one of the best managed relocations that there was, because it was actually a relocation, um, and it was actually fair market. When one caller just talked about only getting $2,000 for a quarter acre, this is nineteen sixty-three money. That's actually was a fair market value. Um, and renters were given relocation services. Uh, Harold Davis was the relocation director and was extremely proud of the work he did and, and I felt that it, it's been looked, hasn't been looked at. And what was really new thing in the sixties is to actually give people a fair amount of money and to help them move. And many of them moved into Hayward neighborhoods. They were given choices. So I, I find it hard that this, only this group of people uh feel they should be compensated. I was, my family personally was relocated twice. Once when Sunset High School was built, they raised three uh blocks of housing. And another time when the Elamita Creek relocation, my ninety-six-year-old grandfather was, uh, had to relocate and die. So i- i- it's, you know, the old saying was, we were in the way of progress. That's what it was. And it was all people. Thank you for recognizing me.
Thank you, Donna. Um, next time, if, you know, feel free to put something in the chat. I did not see your hand. Technical issues. Um, it looks like we do have a couple of more um speakers. And since we've opened it up, I think that we are gonna do our best to um recognize those people um to allow them to have their time. Um, I do want to encourage people to focus on their own comments, not necessarily responding to comments that other people have made. Um, this is your time to speak about your um, you know, personal feelings on this matter, um, rather than trying to convince others to have a different um perspective. Um, with that, we're gonna move on to Marian Johnson. Marian, um, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you uh giving me this opportunity again. And I think um what's important is that the truth is told um throughout this whole uh series of talks. Um, Russell City was taken by a mental main and it was not used the way it was intended. Internet domain is to make the land available for public use. This did not happen. It was sold into private hands. So when you go on to Russell City right now, I can be arrested for standing on my family's property because it is now private property for someone else, when it used to be private property for me. It's not public use. I can get arrested for trespassing. One. Two, my parents were the children of landowners. So they got nothing, including any money to move. They were not given any relocation package. With my mother tried to get an apartment in Hayward because she was black, they turned her away. So we ended up in East Oakland. Um, it was very racist. The people that were allowed to live in Hayward didn't look like us and didn't have the color of our skin. Okay? Um, and as far as pricing, my grandmother paid seventy-five hundred dollars for her land, was given twenty-two. But the hog farmer received a half a million dollars. Is that market value? It's not. So be clear to tell the truth. If one person could get paid a half a million dollars, then everybody should have been paid that much or the, the equivalent of that much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we're gonna take a couple of more comments before moving on to the next topic. Um, Janine, um, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak now.
Hi there. Um, I thank you for uh allowing me this opportunity. And uh Marian did touch on some things. I also put it in the chat. But one important thing to note is that people were not given fair value. Uh, as she mentioned, the hog farmer got more where he raised cat, farm, or farm animals versus people having an established place to live. So that's not equitable by any stretch. So I think we need to be cautious um about um how we uh respond. There are people who have lived this and I think that was a little insensitive uh comment. But um let's be factual about fair market and what really took place and how the intent never happened as it was written, this went into private hands. So thank you very much for uh listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Um, moving on, um, this will be the last comment in this um section. And I'm going to call on Tony Nguyen, Charlton Isabel Sanders. Be able to unmute yourself.
I have a question. How is turning owners into renters being fair? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think with that, we're gonna move on to the next section. Um, and there will be another opportunity to speak about uh the next topic, which is related to affordable housing.
Thank you, Liam. Thank you for those additional public comments. We do appreciate your participation. Um, so as I mentioned, affordable housing is proposal number four. The second one we'll discuss tonight. I'm not going to repeat this, but it's just to frame um our conversation by saying while affordable housing has been mentioned as a priority from community input so far, um, it can be further clarified to better understand what the public wants to be proposed to city council, um, specifically as it relates to preparing harm for Russell City. Um, so as I started to mention, right now, today, the community input doesn't um give the specificity needed. So for example, it's not clear if the recommendations um are more around the development of new affordable housing or preference within existing affordable housing programs. So that's something for you to consider for your input. Um, also, there, just as a caveat, and this came up in some of the public comment earlier, there may be um former Russell City residents and/or descendants who do not qualify for existing affordable housing and/or homelessness programs. So oftentimes, there's an um in, income um threshold or other times, if it's specialty housing, there will be other requirements. So that's something to consider about what's available now. And we talked about the Surplus Lands Act earlier when talking about property restoration. Just a reminder that um there is guidance around disposing of public land that encourages cities and other public entities to create affordable housing. So that's just some context to frame our conversation. And we are going to get right back into public comment, so we have ample time for you all to give your feedback. Um, and Leah will give reminders and helps to coordinate, but again, you can talk up to twice. So if you have thoughts um as it relates to affordable housing, let us know. Again, we're trying to get your feedback, so we can write the what and the why. What are we describing and why is it justified? Um, the how, what are the specific objectives of the proposal? And the who, when we think about who should be eligible for whatever comes of this, um, if approved, who should those people be that council is considering? So again, we'll start with some silent response polls before going into discussion. We may shorten the second poll slightly, um, although I, I know folks were using all the time. So I just want to give you a preview before we launch this poll. Um, again, we'll first start with a short response. So who are the eligible beneficiaries that you think should be considered? And two words or less, and then you'll have a second group. Um, or sorry, a second question for any additional groups you want to add. Um, we will have a more extensive poll like last time, so don't feel limited by this response. This is just to get um a batch of feedback um for folks um to inform the poll that we'll do at the end. Um, before we launch the poll, I see we have a question. It looks like, um, Kathy, did you have a question about the poll? Let me just allow you to talk really quickly. You can be brief, please.
Oh, I, I, I can only see half of this screen.
Oh, okay.
Your picture where you're at covers like where it says eligibility. The background, I guess, that we're all supposed to see, I can only see half.
Um, that, that might be a setting of your device, Kathy. I think there should be some features and we can um chat, maybe if Tim or um, Tim could chat with Kathleen directly. There might be some features. It depends on the device you have. But usually, there's some kind of square or row where you can change your settings. Um, sorry about that inconvenience. Um, thank you so much. So we're gonna go right into the next poll. So again, um, in thinking specifically about affordable housing, please um complete the following poll. Us two questions there on who should be eligible. We have about half the group responding. We'll give it about a minute or two more for your initial thoughts before we go into the expanded thoughts. Think about thirty more seconds to finish your responses if you're among the last um ten or so people working on your answer. Okay, moving on, um, this will be the last comment in this, um, section, and I'm going to call on Tony Nguyen, Charlton Isabel Sanders. Be able to unmute yourself.
I have a question. How is turning owners into renters being fair? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think with that, we're gonna move on to the next section. Um, and there will be another opportunity to speak about, uh, the next topic, which is related to affordable house.
Thank you, Leah. Thank you for those additional public comments. We do appreciate your participation. Um, so as I mentioned, affordable housing is proposal number four. The second one we'll discuss tonight, I'm not gonna repeat this, but it's just to frame, um, our conversation by saying while affordable housing has been mentioned as a priority from community input so far, um, it can be further clarified to better understand what the public wants to be proposed to city council, um, specifically as it relates to preparing harm for Russell City. Um, so as I started to mention right now, today, the community input doesn't, um, give the specificity needed. So for example, it's not clear if the recommendations, um, are more around the development of new affordable housing or preference within existing affordable housing programs. So that's something for you to consider for your input. Um, also there, just as a caveat, and this came up in some of the public comment earlier, there may be, um, former Russell City residents and or descendants who do not qualify for existing affordable housing and or homelessness programs. So oftentimes there's an, um, in income, um, threshold or other times if especially housing, there will be other requirements. So that's something to consider about what's available now. And we talked about the surplus lands act earlier when talking about property restoration. Just a reminder that, um, there is guidance around disposing of public land that encourages cities and other public entities to create affordable housing. So that's just some context to frame our conversation. And we are gonna get right back into public comment, so we have ample time for you all to give your feedback. Um, and Leah will give reminders and helps to coordinate, but again, you can talk up to twice. So if you have thoughts, um, as it relates to affordable housing, let us know. We can put that in the chat. Um, so with that, I would love to, um, invite my colleague, Leah Schmidt, back up to coordinate public comment on affordable housing. Thank you, Leah.
Thank you, Justine. Um, so another quick reminder, um, so if you want to give a public comment, please do raise, uh, raise your hand on Zoom. Uh, it's either at the bottom of the screen or the side, depending on, um, what device you're using. If you're using a, if you're using a telephone, please push star nine to raise your hand. Then we'll know you wanna speak, and then, uh, to unmute yourself, push star six. Um, we really want these public comments to focus on your, um, feelings around this topic, affordable housing, um, and, uh, want to avoid, um, commenting on other people's comments. So do please use this time to reflect, um, how you're feeling about this topic. Um, everybody can speak twice. You have up to two minutes. Um, we will be trying to monitor hands, so to the greatest extent possible. If you put your hands up, please leave it up, um, and then we'll be able to see it. Um, we are using lots of different screens. We won't see it if it just flashes up and down. Um, with that, we're gonna go to Ro Aguilar. Ro, um, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
I got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, I would like to speak to, um, the adoption of, uh, inclusionary affordable housing policies and renters' protection ordinances, and also, uh, the guarantee of non-repetition of this sort of thing, uh, happening in the future that happened to the Russell City residents. Why is inclusionary housing so important? Because it is one of the primary paths to the middle class. Having low-income housing integrated into middle-class residential development provides low-income families with access to all the resources and networks not usually afforded low or very low-income developments. Also, it's much harder for government to treat these communities that are inclusionary and integrated unfairly. And I think Russell City exemplifies an example of a community that was powerless to stop what was happening. I support permanent changes in Hayward's Affordable Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, which should require every new housing development, rental or ownership, to include building affordable units within the development. This inclusionary requirement would address current and future violations of rights and provide descendants of Russell City, hopefully as the priority for these units, as well as low-income Hayward residents with an opportunity for decent rental housing and home ownership. Home ownership is one of the primary paths to the middle class, and it needs to be integrated into a middle-income development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ro. Um, moving on to Jeanette Monroe, and a quick reminder to please raise your hand if you do want to speak. Jeanette, um, if you unmute yourself, we can speak.
Sorry, I I had my, uh, hand, I accidentally hit the hand raise.
We can hear you now.
I don't really wanna speak. Thank you.
Oh, okay. And, uh, okay. This is the time for public comments. Um, you can speak on the topic of affordable housing or if, um, you have thoughts around property restitution that you haven't, you weren't able to provide in the last round, this would be an opportunity for you to do that. And this time is set aside, um, for us to hear directly from you. Okay, we've got a couple of hands. Just had to wait it out. Um, so I'm gonna move on to Priscilla Figueroa. Priscilla, if you unmute yourself, um, we should be able to hear you speak.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Uh, yes, I just have a comment. Um, property in Hayward is very expensive, and, um, I was part of that committee. But one of the things that I thought of and 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 we discussed was maybe perhaps, uh, there could be grants for down payments on home for homeownership. that was powerless to stop what was happening. I support permanent changes in Hayward's affordable inclusionary housing ordinance, which should require every new housing development, rental or ownership, to include building affordable units within the development. This inclusionary requirement would address current and future violations of rights and provide descendants of Russell City, hopefully as the priority for these units, as well as low-income Hayward residents with an opportunity for decent rental housing and home ownership. Home ownership is one of the primary paths to the middle class, and it needs to be integrated into a middle-income development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ro. Moving on to Jeanette Monroe, and a quick reminder to please raise your hand if you do want to speak. Jeanette, if you unmute yourself, we can speak.
Sorry, I, I had my hand, I accidentally hit the hand raise.
We can hear you now.
I don't really want to speak. Thank you.
Oh, okay. And, okay. This is the time for public comments. You can speak on the topic of affordable housing or if you have thoughts around property restitution that you haven't, you weren't able to provide in the last round. This would be an opportunity for you to do that. And this time is set aside for us to hear directly from you. Okay, we've got a couple of hands. Just had to wait it out. So I'm going to move on to Priscilla Figueroa. Priscilla, if you unmute yourself, we should be able to hear you speak.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Yes, I just have a comment. Property in Hayward is very expensive, and I was part of that committee. But one of the things that I thought of and we discussed was maybe perhaps there could be grants for down payments on home for homeownership and low-interest mortgages so that some people in Hayward and specifically now Ruffel City residents or descendants can afford to a home that they could own. And thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Rafiq Mohammed for the prior family. You should be able to unmute yourself and speak now.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
And thanks again for this opportunity. With regard to affordable housing, I am a current resident of Hayward, and I am witnessing the construction of many affordable housing units in addition to the construction of many other multiple housing units in the city of Hayward. And it would be helpful if one or two or three could be designated for former residents and their descent, and the descendants of Russell City. So I wanted to make that suggestion. I am in support of this effort and like to suggest that if at all possible, specific construction projects be designated for the Russell City effort. And I give back my time.
Thank you very much. With that, we do have a few more minutes set aside if anyone else wants to speak. Reverend Tony Pierce. Going to mute yourself. We'll hear you.
Yes, thank you again, and I want to commend you again for your work and your efforts. And continue till this happens. I just wanted to say there should be some tax benefits given. We don't, we want to make sure that whatever we do with affordable housing for any of the descendants of slaves, there must be some tax consideration. Okay, thank you very much for your time. I yield my time. Godspeed.
Thank you, Reverend Pierce. Moving on to Arthur Long, and we do have a few more minutes. You know, at least five more minutes where we could take public comments. So if you do have something to say, please do raise your hand. Arthur Long, we can hear you.
Yeah, thanks again. I, I'm totally in agreement with Rafiq as far as developments for affordable housing that are going up in Hayward. I'm also in agreement with the Reverend that our tax considerations should be given. The taxes should come from the businesses that have taken over our land in Russell City. Those businesses have been taxed as we left there. And I think that the affordable housing should be subsidized or even paid for from the taxes that have been collected on our land in Russell City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Kathy Rodriguez. You should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Hi, I'm Kathy Rodriguez, and I think that I'm a fourth-generation Russell City. My great-grandparents, and I'm the fourth generation. And I also lived there at one time in the sixties. I think that the senior citizens who are from Russell City should have a priority on what they want or what they need because they are now senior citizens. And generations after that, so I'm the fourth generation. So the generations after that, they should have a different set of, you know, wants or needs as far as, you know, there's a couple of ladies who stated what they wanted. And, and I'm not sure if they're seniors or not, but priorities should go to what they need because they're older. That's it.
Thank you very much. We have one or two more minutes if we have any burning last comments on this topic. I don't see any other hands. Oh, Arthur Long wants to finish up a comment. And go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, I, I do want to make a comment. It was, it was regarding the last, last thing that was stated. A lot of our parents who reside in Russell City are gone now. That was over sixty years ago. I'm seventy-one years old. I'm a senior now. And I am not only a resident, but a descendant. I think consideration should be given just as strongly to descendants of the parents who are no longer with us. But I absolutely agree that the descendants that are alive from that time that were owners there should be given first power. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. And just to be clear, we would like to use this time for people to make their own comments and not comment on other people's comments. The purpose of tonight is for us to receive your comments. Everyone's comments are valid. We are not here to change other people's minds or convince people of something else. With that, Ms. Rodriguez, if you have something else to say that is not related to the previous couple of comments, I'd be happy to give you some permission to talk. If you unmute yourself, you should be able to speak.
So I just, what I mean by senior citizens is that I'm a senior citizen, okay? We all know that some of the people have already passed away. My great-grandparents, my grandparents, my dad, they're all gone. And so what I mean is that we should take a survey on those who are elderly and descendants. Let me clarify that. So that way, we could see what their needs and wants are. Because who knows, we might be gone tomorrow. You know, you don't know. That's what I mean.
Thank you. Moving on to Marion Johnson. Marion, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
I am. Thank you. I appreciate it. And I know we're all trying to do our best to stay within time constraints. And it's important to me that the mental health of the Russell City residents and their families are treated very gently and carefully. And yes, sometimes we do respond to what other people said, but that is a genuine reaction to the pain that we have endured. So when someone says something that causes us to feel a certain type of way, this is the only space that we've had in sixty years where we can say what it is that we feel. So it's important for us to be careful, very careful of everyone, especially those descendants and residents of Russell City. I yield my time. Thank you.
Understand. Thank you very much. Moving on to Laura Padron.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My, I'm third generation. My mother is still alive. My grandfather, Albert Aralano, owned over six acres there in Russell City. He had five-bedroom, two-story home he built. And his father had three to four acres nearby, just a right, same block, same cul-de-sac. I remember hearing stories year after year of how my mom, they were trying to push them out of Russell City, and she came home from school. And as they were driving, their home was the last one burnt down. Those are her memories of her father building that house. And you know, years later, he built another house, and that one didn't get burnt down. But it wasn't the same as the Russell City home. The memories of, of the painful evidence of what was just stripped from them. You know, the hard work, the just everything that they owned was gone. And my mom can't even afford to live in the Bay Area. She lives in Visalia. She's alive. You know, she had been encouraging me along with Sister Priscilla Figueroa to camp on to these Zooms. I have been on one or two. She was, my mom, my mother just got a rehabilitation. She had fallen, and thank God she's living and she's well. And I'm going to encourage her to speak. She's just a little nervous. She's not here with me right now, but the next meeting, I really want her to share her feelings and, and how important it is to acknowledge what was happening then and what is happening now. And that, yes, I believe that those that, such as my mom, that lived there should have thoughts that are heard. And I know that you have been doing that. But as far as privileges and priorities, my mom's not that type of person. But, you know, putting it out there, it would definitely, just, just to offer something as a priority would, would be a beginning of healing, you know? But to see, to, for her to know now that her descendants, you know, may have the opportunity to reside again in the Bay Area on their land where they were born. I was born in Santa Clara, and I can't afford to live there. I'm actually homeless, living with my sister right now. And I stay with my mom and my dad, like, you know, and I, I know all about it. And I just, what I would like to see is that descendants are given priority as far as application and acceptance before it goes to the public of Hayward. That's what I would like to see. And, and, and the time considered. No, okay, thank you. You have my time.
Thank you, and please encourage your mother to attend. Please, there are going to be other meetings at the end of the, at the end. We, there's going to be dates. I think they're every Wednesday. So please do pay attention, go to the website, encourage her to participate.
I will. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And with that, I think that we will close the public comments. That doesn't mean public comments will not be received. You can, there is an email that was provided earlier in the meeting where you can write in. In addition, I think Justine will go over opportunities to comment on some of the stuff that we heard tonight.
Okay, thank you so much, Leah, and thank you to everyone who gave public comment tonight on the polls and also who will be doing that during our public comment period. So we are just past eight o'clock, and we wanted to move into the closing remarks and also the closing ranking survey. So as Leah mentioned, we are going to enter into a public comment period for these two proposals. So if you were on the town hall last week where we talked about fair compensation for lost property, for lost businesses, for forced relocation, we also spoke about general basic income. That public comment has not started. It should start by this Friday. So these two public comment periods will be overlapping. This website here is our Russell City portal website where you can find all the information on public comment. So you can see the links to specific surveys. The questions will feel very similar to what you discussed today. It's an opportunity for folks who did not intend to weigh in on the description, on the objectives, on the eligibility criteria. And it's also an opportunity to add revisions to a draft of the proposals. So we do ask that you look out for public comment in writing beyond this. We will pair feedback from this meeting with feedback from the public comment surveys as well as any other public comments that come via email and use that for our analysis of what we heard before finalizing the proposals and going to council. So like we said at the top of this meeting, we really want to hear from you. We want to make sure what is considered by council is reflecting what the community is prioritizing. So please do participate in public comment and feel free to share with others who may not be in the loop. If you, for some reason, do not get the Russell City project emails, there is a link on our website that says, "Join our mailing list." So if you go to, I'll just read it out for anyone on the phone, So it's hayward-ca.gov/rcrjp-portal. That information will be available in the chat. You can find it also by searching City of Hayward, Russell City. So as far as what's coming up next, our next town hall will be a few weeks out. So we just had two back-to-back. We will do two back-to-back in August. The next discussion is on Wednesday, August twenty-first. We are holding the same three-hour block of time, and we'll do our best to finish a little bit early, like it looks like we will be doing tonight. But it's really important that we have the time and we can accommodate whoever attends to get the feedback that we need. The next discussion will be on scholarships and academic grants as well as pipeline or pathway programs. So things like apprenticeship programs, fellowship programs, internships, and on-the-job training will be the focus of the pipeline and pathway proposals. Here's a schedule of our overall town hall schedule and overall public comment periods. So this work is ongoing. As you can imagine, it's a lot of work to create space to get the feedback. But we also want to make sure we do the work on the backend to actually analyze it, recap what you said, and reflect that back in concise and clear documents for council consideration. So the series of conversations will go on throughout the fall with the goal of getting to city council by November and December, like I mentioned earlier. Tentatively, our goal is to have the first of two meetings on November nineteenth, where any final questions can be resolved in a work session and/or a public hearing. And then we do want to bring proposals to council for consent by December third, ideally. Give or take the feedback at the first work session. So we really thank you for helping us to craft something that is meaningful, and we hope that you feel heard, seen, and reflected, all your expertise and all your experience and what is being shared. So we will close out with a ranking poll. This basically will repeat similar questions to earlier in the meeting. So I just want to explain it before it goes live. You will see two questions. The first is to rank potential eligible beneficiaries for property restoration. So you can select up to three groups. The second poll will be to rank eligible beneficiaries for affordable housing resulting from this project. So I think for affordable housing, we heard a pretty broad range of ideas. So from your perspective on what you think it should be, we want your feedback on who we should be centering for affordable housing in addition to who we should be centering for property restoration. So we'll give you a few minutes to complete that poll before we have closing remarks. And then after that, we will turn it over to our assistant city manager for final thoughts, and we'll let you all get to your evenings. So Tim, can I please have your support with launching our final two polls? And for reference, this is actually based on the feedback that folks shared. So one thing I will distinguish is that for the first property restoration poll, you'll see descendants as well as descendants of property owners listed. Descendants referring to people broadly, of anyone who lived in Russell City, regardless of homeownership or property ownership status or not. And then descendants of property owners being as it is defined. It looks like we're having some technical issues with the poll. Give us just one second. Sorry, I'll come on camera. Our apologies. It looks like you're only able to select one group. We will save this poll and actually relaunch it, so you can select up to three options. So our apologies, if you have submitted information, please resubmit it. We will check the answers for both polls to make sure people only get to vote once for this ranking. But give us just a moment, and we can share the poll as it was intended, so you can select up to three groups. And thank you for those in the chat who brought that to our attention. Okay, so Tim, is this a new poll or should I relaunch? Okay, there we go. The new poll is live, so now you're free to rank your feedback again on property restoration for up to three potential eligible groups. About seventy-one percent of our attendees responded. We do want to give everyone a chance to vote on this, if you would like, before we do the final ranking eligibility poll for affordable housing. So if you're one of the nine people working on your response, please take about a minute or two more before we close the poll. And if you are experiencing any technical difficulties with the poll, please feel free to send your responses in the chat so we can get that recorded. So if you have checkbox, as I see, at least one person says their box is disappearing. If you could use the chat and just send it to the host or the panelist, we will flag your answers for you. So because we are having some technical difficulties, let's take about another minute or so before we close this poll to make sure everyone's ranking can be recorded. So I think we only had one person with a technical assistance issue, and it looks like we're we are resolving that in the chat. So I will now end this poll. So if you're finishing your last responses, please go ahead and submit. And we'll end the poll and then share the feedback. And keep in mind, there's one person who does not have responses recorded. So you should now be able to see the results of that ranking poll, so specifically looking at property restoration. As I mentioned, there was some overlap in the feedback, so I do encourage you all in public comments to continue to specify. Some people raised descendants broadly, which could be interpreted as descendants of anyone who resided in Russell City, whereas others specified descendants of property owners. Those two had, or sorry, descendants of property owners have the highest response, followed by property owners and homeowners. So we had seventeen of thirty-one, fifty-five percent said descendants. Forty-eight percent of the thirty-one respondents said homeowners or property owners. Forty-five percent of the attendees said descendants, so descendants broadly. And then thirty-five percent said former residents broadly, so not necessarily tying that to land ownership or homeownership status. There was also thirty-two percent of folks who said business owners. And you can see the other results there in front of you. So thank you all for participating in that. We will be making all the information available from these meetings online. We'll need some time to finish all the analysis and groupings, but these poll results will be made available. So now we're going to do our last poll and try to see if we can still get you out of here about ten to fifteen minutes early. This will be the same question of different responses, so we can launch our poll for affordable housing eligibility. Again, this is based on what you all told us you want in this meeting tonight. So there is a range of several options. I encourage you to look through all of them and make your selections before we close the poll. We'll take about four more minutes, so please feel free to complete your answers at that time. Okay, about seventy-five percent of folks have responded. We'll give you about maybe one or two more minutes to make sure everyone has a chance to read through all the responses. So if you have not submitted your response, if you're among the last eight people waiting to respond, please take about thirty more seconds to get your answers in. Okay, so if you have not submitted your response, please do so. Now we are about to close the poll. We got eighty-seven percent or now ninety percent participation, so thank you. Let's give it about ten more seconds, because it seems like some questions are coming in. So of the forty participants remaining on the call, thirty-six have responded. So the feedback that you see will be reflecting that sample size. Okay, it looks like our last responses have come in. Again, if you did not get a chance to share your ranking and the poll for affordable housing, potentially a potential beneficiaries for eligibility, please do so in the chat, and we'll have a record of it, just like we'll have a record of everything said verbally. So I'm not seeing any more responses in the chats. I'm going to go ahead and end the, sorry, the poll. End the poll now and share results for you all to see. So on your devices, if you're joining on Zoom, you should be able to see the responses to the Affordable Housing Ranking Poll. For a time, I won't go through all of the responses. I'll just highlight some of the more frequently mentioned ones, so roughly seventy two percent of respondents said descendants. And fifty percent of respondents said residents with some other a little bit less, but some responses around unhoused prior residents or people experiencing homelessness broadly. So thank you so much for that. Again, we will make these poll results available online, and as we go into the public comment period, there will be opportunities for you to weigh in. So that ranking poll that we just completed is really just to get a temperature check for where we are today and what you all are thinking. So with that, I'll stop sharing my screen and we'll bring up the team for a farewell. I just want to say thank you all so much for taking time. We understand that this work is not easy. As we mentioned at the beginning, it comes with an emotional labor, and we understand that to have three hours of your time or two and a half hours of your time is a major commitment. So thank you so much. Like I mentioned, you all will be entered into a raffle, so look out for email notification tomorrow to see if you're our lucky winner. And with that, I want to say thank you so much to the staff team, to Leah, to Kathleen, to Tim, to Regina, to Luisa, who joined us as well to help provide this meeting in Spanish. We really appreciate you, and we look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. And with that, I will turn it over to Assistant City Manager Regina Youngblood to close this out.
Thank you, Josephine. I also want to thank you for all your leadership in facilitating most of the session tonight. Thank you again to the staff team on board to assist, and thank you to all of you from the community, from Russell City and beyond, who decided to join us tonight and invest your time and energy to provide us with some very fruitful feedback about these proposals. I again, just thank you so much, and hopefully we'll see you at the next town hall.